Good evening. We're at the October 16th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Brock Heath, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Okay, let's pray. God, thank you for all the blessings, all the favors that you give us as a city and individually. Thank you for watching over us as we continue to move forward. It is an absolute gift that we live in this country, that we do. It's the light of the world. God help our military go out there and defeat the enemy. God, thank you for watching over the people that are here, the firefighters, the police, that protect us as we're back home as well. In your name, in Jesus' name, we appreciate all the blessings that you give to us, and we declare victory over every day. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
All members of council are present.
Tonight, we have with us Mr. Joe Braden, who's with the West Regional Liaison with the State Auditor's Office for a presentation. Welcome, Mr. Braden.
Thank you. It's my honor to be here tonight on behalf of Auditor of State Dave Yost to present the City of Troy with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction for the 2016 Fiscal Audit Year Period. It's important to note that this puts the City of Troy in a very unique situation, a select group. The Auditor of State's office audits nearly 6,000 entities, and less than 300 of them are even eligible for this award. The Auditor of State Award with Distinction is presented to local governments and school districts upon completion of their financial audit that meet the following criteria of a clean financial report. You must complete a comprehensive annual financial report within six months of financial year-end, must have a clean audit with no findings for recovery, no material citations, material weaknesses, any significant deficiencies, single audit files or any question costs, have no other financial concerns, and the management letter must contain no comments related to any ethics referrals, question cost less than $10,000, lack of timely report submission reconciliation issues, failure to obtain a timely single audit, findings for recoveries, or public meetings or public records issues. I always like to read through that so you guys know how much it takes to receive this award. This award not only represents -- it represents the hard work of every city employee here and all the council members and the mayor, too, who every day do an excellent job in accounting for the city's dollars. I especially want to recognize John Frigge, if you'd like to come on down here for a second, the city auditor. I'd like to recognize him for his leadership, his professionalism, and his commitment to fiscal integrity. John, well done, John. (Applause) (Inaudible) Dave Yost, I'd like to present the Auditor of State Award with Distinction.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
(Inaudible). Thank you very much.[239.31][239.31](Laughter).
Thank you, Mr. Braden.
You are welcome. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for coming here tonight.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. We'll continue then with the summary of the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please.
Minutes of Council, October 2, 2017. There was a public hearing on ordinance number O-24-2017. Committee reports. Safety and Health Committee reported that committee recommended legislation be prepared to approve the 2018 funding to the Miami County Health District. Utilities Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for the printing and mailing of utility bills. There was a summary report provided about the workshop on downtown parking and traffic report. Resolution number R-46-2017, agreement with Miami County Public Health District for Health Services for 2018, was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-47-2017, authorizing bidding and entering into a contract for outsourcing of printing and mailing of utility bills was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-24-2017, rezoning, was given second reading. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:31 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move we accept the minutes as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We'll begin committee reports tonight with the Law and Ordinance Committee and Mr. John Schwaizer.
Yes, ma'am, we have one. This committee met on October 9 to review a recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that 93 Robin Hood Lane be rezoned from R-4 Single Family Residential to OR-1 Office Residential District. At the October 2 public hearing, no comments were made regarding proposed rezoning. It is the recommendation of this committee that ordinance number O-24-2017 be adopted to provide for the rezoning of 93 Robin Hood Lane from R-4 Single Family Residential District to OR-1 Office Residential District, and that is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Schwaizer. The Personnel Committee has a couple of reappointments. Chairman, Mr. Twilliger.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Benish has asked for approval of the reappointment of William G. Rozell and Jordan Romberger to the Tax Incentive Review Council. I move that council approve the reappointment of William G. Rozell and Jordan Romberger to the Tax Incentive Review Council for terms of October 20, 2017, to October 19 of 2020.
I'll second that. It's been moved by Mr. Twilliger and seconded by Mrs. Snee, I'm sorry, to accept the appointments. Are there any comments from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Safety and Health Committee has our next reports. Mrs. Oda?
On October 3, this committee met to consider recommending that the Troy Complete Streets Policy be amended. A great deal of written information was provided, and council members and citizens provided comments at the meeting related to the Complete Streets Policy and especially bike lanes and shared roads. It is the unanimous recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to amend the Complete Streets Policy to define and clarify the scope, extent, and decision-making processes, including public notification prior to decisions related to adding bike shared roads versus dedicated bike lanes. Respectfully submitted, John Twilliger, Brock Heath, and myself. Additionally, there's a minority report filed by myself. A motion was made by myself that the committee recommend legislation for the removal of the bike lane on North Adams Street. This motion was not supported by the other two committee members and effectively does not continue from here. Respectfully submitted, myself.
Thank you, Mrs. Oda. Are there any comments from council members or questions?
I just, I would like to ask if this go to another reading.
We'll do that when we get to the readings of the resolutions.
All right.
We have Chairman Bobby Phillips this evening with a few reports from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. On October 9, this committee met to review the bidding request for the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase 2. The project area is North Market Street from Fossway and Kirk Lane to Stony Ridge Avenue, and the project's scope includes roadway construction, utilities, and new sidewalk curb and gutter. The roadway will be modified from the current four-lane section to a three-lane cross-section that includes a center turn lane, bike lanes between Fossway and Cricket Lane, as well as an added curb lawn on the east side of the roadway. There will be no loss of on-street parking. $525,000 of the project cost will be funded by a grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission. Based on the final design, the construction estimate is $1.87 million. A future reappropriation may be required in the Stormwater Fund, but project funds are available within the applicable balances. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to proceed with the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase 2 and to authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase 2 at a cost not to exceed $1.87 million. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions on this topic?
I do have a couple of questions. I was not here for the committee meeting. I just received tonight the maps to look at. I guess I'm wondering, I did have a chance right before getting here tonight to see the video. I just find it interesting that we have another four-lane road that we are now deciding is not needed, nor was it ever warranted, and I'm wondering why we keep coming up with four-lane roads that we can just reduce the lanes. Who made those decisions years ago to put in four-lane roads, and now we're saying they're not needed?
I can't speak to however many years ago that that became four lanes. Can say that we had an outside engineer that designed, they analyzed and designed this project, and in doing so, they, doing the current traffic counts and comparing it to the standards that would warrant four lanes, as well as the driver confusion that you have, particularly as you're coming out of the west perpendicular roads such as Robin Hood, Mary Robin, etc.
There's confusion?
That it is not warranted to have the four lanes. By doing that, we can narrow the width of roadway, save us some asphalt costs, add some tree lawn, if you will, to a portion of the east side, which would move the sidewalk away from the curb a little bit and make it a little safer. Yes, by making the, I guess the confusion, perhaps confusion's the wrong word, but trying to navigate across two lanes when you're trying to go left on North Market with two lanes of traffic coming south, it's more difficult to navigate than it would to navigate one lane into a center turn lane, because then you have a holding lane, and then you can merge into the right lane to, the northbound lane to travel north. These are, these came from our engineer. They're not something that we came up with, that was recommended to us based on the, again, the traffic volumes and the traffic standards.
Well, I'm assuming that we had an engineer when those four lanes were put in, and we're bigger now than we were at that point. We're building out there. I don't see the wisdom in it. What I see happening is what we have happening in front of Tim Hortons, where people are trying to share a turn lane, and you get people trying to turn into Tim Hortons while people are trying to turn left onto Adams on a bigger area. You've got more people turning left and right, well, making left-hand turns than we do at that intersection. And is that not a concern?
I mean, you can't compare West Main Street to North Market in that area. They're two different roads. They're two different traffic counts. The traffic counts in that section of North Market are between a half and a third of what would warrant having four lanes.
Taxes are already paid for the asphalt that's down.
I don't know how long ago that was striped four lanes. It's the section between Fossway and Cricket that has four lanes. North of that, you have three lanes, because you have a parking lane on the east side. So it's really just that section that I'm talking about going from four lanes down to three.
Okay. Well, I haven't had time to look at the maps yet, and I will do that after this meeting.
Any other questions? You may continue, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, ma'am. Also on October 9, the committee continued to meet and consider recommending that a professional services agreement be authorized with the firm of LJB, Inc., for the design of the McCague Road Improvement Project Phase 4 at a cost not to exceed $265,000. This phase includes the replacement of curb, gutter, sidewalk, storm sewers, and roadway reconstruction on McCague Avenue between the alley west of Lake Street to the I-75 Overpass. The cost estimate exceeds the budgeted amount of $265,000, as the city requested additional analysis and design work, including an intersection assessment of the McCague-Dorset intersection to determine the best alternative improvement of that intersection. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a professional services agreement with LJB, Inc. of Miamisburg, Ohio, at a cost not to exceed $265,000 for the design of the McCague Road Improvement Project Phase 4. And this is, again, respectfully submitted by Mrs. Snee, Mr. Heath, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council on the report? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Do you have anything further this evening?
I skipped over and read the third one second, but I'll read the second one third.
Okay. Please continue.
The committee also on October 9 regarding bidding for the Sidewalk Improvement Program Phase 10. The project to be bid includes the properties where the owners have not obtained a permit to have the work done. The estimated cost of the work to be bid is $200,000, which is less than the amount budgeted. It was the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Sidewalk Improvement Program Phase 10 at a cost not to exceed $200,000. And this, again, is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you. At this time, we will accept any questions or comments on any agenda items this evening. If anyone in the audience has any comments or questions, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There's a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kober is our Seeing none, then we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R-48-2017.
Resolution number R-48-2017, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for Phase 10 of the Sidewalk Repair Program. Cost not to exceed $200,000, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Schwaizer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwaizer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
No.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwaizer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
I would like to recuse myself as my daughter-in-law is employed by LJB.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-50-2017.
Resolution number R-50-2017, resolution amending Resolution Number R-21-2017, adopting an amended City of Troy, Ohio Complete Streets Policy as part of the City of Troy, Ohio Comprehensive Plan, first reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
I would ask if this go to a second reading.
Without objection, this will go to a second reading. Mrs. Knight, we'll move on to the ordinance, ordinance O-24-2017.
Ordinance number O-24-2017, ordinance changing the zoning of parcel DO-8040730 in lot 4073 in the City of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning of R-4 Single Family Residential District to OR-1 Office Residential District. This is the third reading. This is the address of 93 Robin Hood Lane. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwaizer and seconded by Mrs. Snee to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-25-2017.
Ordinance number O-25-2017, ordinance determining to proceed with the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase 2 and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase 2. Cost not to exceed $1,870,000, first reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwaizer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
No.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schwaizer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
No.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mayor Benish, do you have any comments this evening?
Just a few. First of all, thank you for your reappointment support. They're great people, doing good things for our community, and I appreciate your support and vote. October, as we all know, is Cancer Awareness Month, and the Pink Ribbon Girls came to Troy. Then we came with a fundraising goal of 30,000. There were well over 42,000 in their fundraising goal. That's fantastic, and it happened right here in Troy, and I'm proud of that. The Mayor's Prayer Breakfast also took place this past weekend, and we had QRT members sharing what their role was, and that was also, the impact is positive, and they shared that with those who attended that breakfast. This past week, on Friday, I think Friday, Troy Christian Elementary students went around to all the facilities of, including City Hall, and took bags of candy with notes, individual notes, from each student. We had sixth graders at City Hall, all with notes sharing their positive support for our community and the efforts that all of us, all of you, all of the community does to make Troy a great place for them to go to school. I thought that was pretty powerful stuff when they came out. And next, I gotta say, a big plug for the Trojans. All of us knew there was a key football match up this past weekend. We came out on top to a state-ranked, previously undefeated team. And just so you know, the Fall Troy Sports Programs all have winning teams, which says something about not only the academic part, but the athletic part as well. So we have good student athletes. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Tidderington, any comments this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick ones. Leaf pickup is ongoing. We're still in the first round. That started at the beginning of October. We anticipating, we are anticipating, weather permitting, of course, that Round 2 will begin at the end of October, October 30. I'd like to remind folks again, like every year, please don't commingle your grass and your brush with the leaves, because we can't, we can't take it. Our machines will get gummed up if that happens. The second announcement is the Riverfront, Downtown Riverfront study from the consultant. The consultant will be presenting that study, his recommendations, on November 13. That's a Monday. That will be at the Bravo Room at the arena, and that will begin at 6:30. And it is open to the public, and we hope that as many people can come as possible. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kober, any comments?
I have no comments this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. City Auditor, Mr. Frigge.
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Reminder, October 19, at 7:30, is meet the Candidate Night Forum at Troy Junior High School, and this is open to the public, and they're encouraged to attend. Are there any comments from city council members this evening?
Yes, Madam President, I have one.
Mr. Swazer?
Mark your calendars. January 15th, we will be celebrating the life of Dr. Martin Luther King. If you're interested in being in the march, that will start in front of Bakehouse Bread's about 9:30. There will be a service at First United Methodist Church, and there will be fellowship afterwards at First Place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Any other council members have any comments this evening? Are there any comments from city staff members? Tonight, I'd like to welcome Ms. Lynette Snopes from the US Census Office this evening. I think she's with us and has a few comments. Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Council President, city council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lynette Snopes, and I'm from the Philadelphia Regional Office of the Census Bureau. Yes, I am from Philadelphia, but Ohio is one of the nine states in our region in which we manage. And I'm in, in Troy, well, specifically in Miami County, to promote census jobs. We have a couple of positions called a field representative that are currently available in, in Miami County. This is not for the decennial census, the upcoming 2020 census, but this is for our ongoing census operations. A lot of people ask me, oh, why are you here? The census isn't until 2020. But the reality is, and a lot of people do not know, is that, well, I'm sure you all know, that the Census Bureau is in the field 12 months out of the year. We're responsible for all the major economic indicators, such as the Consumer Price Index, unemployment rates, housing starts, and a lot of health and crime statistics as well. The reason that you don't hear of the Census Bureau in the mix of all of this is because we are the agency that actually collects the data and turns it over to the respective federal agency that crunches the numbers and releases the data that we all have come to love and know. So I'm here to talk about the census job. It is for what's called a field representative. In the state of Ohio, we pay between $1,253 and $1,463 an hour, but for Miami County, the rate is $1,281, and that is also with 53 and 1/2 cents mileage reimbursement. What does a field representative do? The field representative, again, it's a part-time position. You work about 20 to 30 hours a week, and you're responsible for going to selected people's homes to collect survey data using a laptop computer, which we provide. There is a training, a five-day training, that we would, of course, pay for you to come to Philadelphia. And, again, 20 to 30 hours a week. It is a part-time position, and we are hiring for several people in Miami County. This is my first time in Troy. It's a wonderful city. It's very beautiful here downtown, very serene. I was impressed with all the friendliness of the people, so I don't imagine that the field representative job would be as challenging here as it in major cities, because everyone was so doggone friendly. So when someone is knocking at your door wanting some personal information about you, I don't pose it to be a problem here in Troy. There is a testing, there is a testing that we're going to have in Miami County sometime in the next couple of weeks. I do have some literature here that I would like to leave for people, but if you're interested in this position, the number to call is 866-564-5420. And when you call our office, we're just going to ask you for your name, your email address, your physical address, and we'll contact you when the test is scheduled. Again, that number is 866-564-5420. And the qualifications aren't a lot, just a high school diploma or a GED. You're required to have a valid driver's license and access to an insured vehicle, and you have to pass a written test, which is just basic reading comprehension, math, and your ability to read maps. And then after that, if you do pass, we have two interviews, and it's a, it's a very short session, about 20 minutes of interviewing. And that's about it. And I just wanted to, again, expose the, the field representative position, and hopefully that people are interested and would be willing to apply. And again, that number to dial is 866-564-5420. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You may leave any literature with Mrs. Knight that you have, that you would like to.
I will.
And also, if you want to turn around, Kathy Wada, what do you have? Kathy's with the Chamber of Commerce, and they have a job site on their website that covers our area, and you may want to touch base with her right after the meeting.
I will.
And get that information.
Will do.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Is there any comments or questions from anyone in the audience this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Mr. Connor, 1210 South Creek Street, Troy, Ohio. I'd like to say thanks and respect for Ms. Oda. She seems like she's the only one that's trying to listen to the citizens and the constituents. She's not following the man with the bell like the rest of the sheep are. She's not swimming with the salmon going upstream. She has a mind of her own. She's trying to use common sense, and I have hope, above all hope, that some of the other council people will take and see what she's trying to do and jump on board with her and support her rather than saying, no, we ain't going to support it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments this evening?
Chris Davis, 412 Street, Market Street. Are you also putting bike lanes in there too, as you shrink the road? Because I really love saving money on asphalt, but you're going to add bike lanes, do I, I understand, correct?
Mr.?
In the one section between Fosway and Cricket on the east and Fosway roughly to Robinhood, there will be room for one, one on each side, so we won't have a dual one. And it's not any kind of additional cost, because, yes, we are narrowing the lane, but whether we put bike lanes or not, you will have that berm there because of the three lanes versus the four lanes.
So it seems like four lanes in Troy is becoming three lanes everywhere you go now. Is, I mean, just because some outside guy recommended it, we're going to just follow it? Dorset's the same way now. I mean, you're, Market Street, everything, it's all changed into small, you know, three lanes. I'm for the one on Main Street, because it's dangerous, but you've got more people building out on North Market Street, you're going to have more cars coming into Troy and going out of Troy that way. So it's just my comment. And my second one is, what's wrong with McCag? The, the four-way stop there? I mean, what, everybody seems it's so much safety for people, but what is wrong with it? I mean, I heard there should possibly be a roundabout being put in there.
Okay, you're talking about the, the four-way.
The corner, yeah. The, the Dorset. McCag and Dorset, yeah.
That has always been a concern. The, the issue is, is that you have basically the same volume of traffic that comes in on all four sides. In the past, we've looked at, should we go to a conventional stoplight? It's always been, at least in the past, recommended against it because the wait times for people on all four sides would be excessive. And so all we're looking at is, while we look at Phase Four, to continue the improvements to McCag, at the same time, look at that intersection and see what, if any, better solution there might be for that traffic.
Now, will that be brung up for the citizens to know what you're going to decide?
That will be like, you know, like any of the other phases.
Will it be notified here?
We've, you know, go to the council, and they'd have to approve.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Todd Severt, 148 Mary Robin. I think most people at council know this, but just in case they didn't, and it's relatively short notice, but keeping with the Troy tradition at K's, there'll be a meet and greet with